It is Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P. M. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting in order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you taken roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present and you do have a call.
Thanks. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board, do you have any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Not going to entertain them. Go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to the mayor's report. A couple of items under my report this evening. First is I have a resolution and want to provide recognition to our current court administrator, Beau Shelby, for her service to the city of Carney. Our court administrator has announced that she will be relocating to Florida with her son. She started with the city seven years ago in twenty eighteen and since has become our court administrator. As she has formed admirably in that position, we value Beau and her excellent people skills. She has agreed to stay on with us until August first to help train our new court clerk, Linda Herrera. So I have a resolution I want to ask the board to approve, City of Carney Resolution Number Thirty-three, twenty twenty-two, a resolution recognizing the contributions of Beau Shelby to the city of Carney these past seven years. Whereas Beau Shelby started her part-time employment with the city of Carney on September twenty fifteen as an assistant court clerk, and whereas Beau Shelby started her full-time employment with the city of Carney on April first, twenty sixteen, as a water collections clerk, and whereas Beau was promoted to municipal courts administrator in July twenty eighteen, and whereas during her tenure, Beau did oversee the transition to state court software system, and whereas Beau did also implement many new municipal court administrative procedures as required by new state legislation. And now therefore, the mayor and Board of Aldermen do resolve that the city of Carney does commend Beau Shelby for her outstanding service and her commitment to making Carney, the Carney community better, by making it a better place to live and work. And furthermore, we do wish her the very best on relocating to Florida, given her my hand and official seal of the city of Carney, Missouri, this eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-two, signed by myself, Mayor Randy Pogue. Board, can we entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-three, twenty twenty-two?
I make a motion. I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Beau, would you like to come forward so I can present you with this resolution? Do you have anything to say?
Yeah. Okay. To the mayor and the ladies and gentlemen of the board, Judge Brian Klaufenstein and Prosecutor Zach Thompson, I want to thank you for that opportunity to serve the city of Carney. But I know I'm not special. You have a great group of people that work here, and to me, they're my family. I want to thank you guys for bringing me into your family. I really appreciate it. A special thank you to our city administrator, Jim Eldridge, who was a fine example of what dedication and loyalty is, and it was my pleasure to work up under him and to witness his dedication and loyalty to the city every day. To my very best friend, Linda Reeves, who I call Lili. I'm trusting her to take court to the next level, and I know she will do a great job in that. And to my mommy in heaven, Meljord Andrews, she showed me my purpose in life, and so I dedicate this resolution to her. Thank you.
Oh, we love you.
And just saying, you know, things don't work out in Florida, which I couldn't imagine they would. You've always got a home here, so. That's right. Second item under mayor's remarks this evening is I want to provide some recognition to the Carney High School Boys' Varsity Track Team by for their placing of first in the state. Congratulations to head coach Scott Crawl and the Carney High School Track Team for taking first in state, which is a first in our school history. We have invited them this evening to share some of their stories and for the city to recognize them for their athletic achievements for which we all have a great pride in. Eric, if you could read the prepared resolution, please, and then invite the coaches up to share some stories.
Okay. Resolution Number Thirty-two, twenty twenty-two. Congratulating the Carney High School Boys' Track Team members, head coach Scott Crawl, and assistants on their state championship and achievements from the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Carney High School Boys' Track Team participated in many school meets and tournaments, and whereas such achievement requires physical dedication, year-round time devoted to conditioning and training, along with outstanding individual and group leaders from this team. And whereas the Carney High School Boys' Team participated in the Missouri State High School Activities Association State Championships, and whereas many individuals placed in the top six in either individual events or as a team event, as Luke Nolan and Logan Ariano emerging as individual state champions. And whereas at the M. S. H. S. A. A. State Championships held in Jefferson City, Missouri, the team set many personal and shattering Carney High School school records along the way, including being the first ever Carney High School Boys' Team State Champions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Aldermen, the city of Carney does hereby congratulate the Carney High School Boys' State Track Team members, Luke Nolan, Logan Ariano, Rock Colehauer, Joe Marshall, Grant Nolan, Tyler Chapel, Zach Proctor, K. J. Smith, Zach Grace, John Timchak, Will Dolliner, Landis Johnson, Jake Gregory, head coach Scott Crawl, and assistants Jeff Hutton, Rachel Daniels, Chris Daniels, Tom O'Brien, Therese Rankin, Kenny Brown, Marcus Brinkley, Mel White, Richard Haas, Hunter Gray, and Brad Colehauer. Passed and resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Carney, Missouri, this eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-two.
Board, can we entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Coach. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
First off, thanks, guys, for this recognition. This is very special for our school district, and it is very special for the town of Carney. Being in a historic setting in which they did this year, it's kind of crazy, but last year they made history by taking second in the state, and we were pretty excited about that. And these boys were very determined, and when we were leaving the state track meet two years ago, they were, we're going to win it next year. Sounds like a plan, you know? You know, all these kids, they've worked extremely hard. I am blessed to be here at Carney. I am blessed with these kids. I am blessed with the outstanding coaching staff that stands behind me. And I couldn't be more proud of the program and the city of Carney. And again, the support that we have received over the last years, not this year. We have gotten support from day one, years and years and years ago, building this program to where it is now. So just highlights from the particular meet itself, you know? In the Missouri Track Meet, a two-day meet is extremely difficult because you never know what's going to happen. You know, you have good things that happen, and sometimes you have bad things that happen. And a lot of times, you know, the team that wins the state championship has got to have everything go right. And this year, everything went right for Carney. And we could talk about all the individual accolades of all of these kids that are sitting behind us, but at the end of the day, what they did, all of those names that are on that resolution, and all those coaches that are on that resolution, all credit goes to them, to the work that they did, and I couldn't be more proud and humbled to be their head coach. And I appreciate you guys recognizing these great young men because they are phenomenal kids. They're going to do phenomenal things in years to come. Our seniors, a lot of them are going off to college, and they're going to be competing at the collegiate level and remember their names. You're going to see those names again. So thank you again. We appreciate it. It's been quite an honor. It's been quite a summer and being recognized, and these kids are going to remember it forever. And many years down the road, I've talked about it to them, that hey, one day we'll all get together again, and we'll be indebted to the Carney High School Athletic Hall of Fame as a team because there ain't a team better. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all.
Have a nice day.
Thanks, Dan, for coming.
We'll move on to the administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are having David Ross Construction start actively working on the salt barn, and I believe David, or Donnie, if he's in the room, can give you a little more briefing on that.
Donnie's not here this evening.
Okay. I wanted to show you guys at least the site of where they're were proposing to place the salt barn. They've prepped the site, and this is how it looked last week. I think they're moving pretty quick with it right now. So we're delighted to be under construction now, and we'll have that completed for this fall. Also, Mr. Mayor, I want to report to you that the bulky item pickup has been scheduled for the week of October the seventeenth through the October the twentieth, and the actual pickup day for each resident will fall on their normal trash day scheduled in the week. And that would conclude my report.
Great. We'll move on to the next item under the agenda. We do have an item under the public request in hearing this evening. Do you want to read that, Jim?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, Dan Hacker is owner of property at the southwest corner of James, Jesse James Farm Road and Ninety-two Highway. They are seeking approval of a lot split creating two commercial lots. At their July eleventh meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval with a five to zero vote. Those minutes are enclosed in the agenda. A proposed ordinance has been prepared for the board's consideration, and David Pavlich is online to give you more details.
Mr. Pavlich, do you have any additional comments from staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Thanks, Jim, for the comments. I just want to add a couple of comments. One being that the property is within the District Six boundary, so there is a water district fee that applies at the time of building permits when those are issued. And then two, this split of the property subdivision would create two lots. Lot one A is planned to be Dan Hacker's business location. He's, in the future, would be building a new building on that property. And then the northern portion of property, Lot Two A, would be further subdivided, end up to about nine lots per the preliminary plat. In your packet included a little screenshot of that proposed layout. Hopefully, we see that development happen at some point in the future. The lot split hasn't happened sooner because there was a need to extend some sewer service to provide sewer for both of those lots. Again, the planning and zoning recommended unanimously five to zero to approve the final plat. I did not, I don't see Dan Hacker on Zoom tonight. It's hard for me to see who might be in the audience.
He's not in the audience either. Alderman Barber, Planning and Zoning Liaison, do you have anything to add to the report? If there are no questions from the board, can we read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the final plat of Hacker Acres Lots One A and Two A, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way easements thereon.
I make a motion to approve on first read.
I'll second. All in favor? Oppose? Read the ordinance, second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Hacker Acres Lots One A and Two A, a subdivision in Carney, Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way easements thereon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber? Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item this evening. Item six A for public hearings. Mark Riles, Sixty-nine Storage LLC at four twenty-five Sandbar Drive, rezoning request from M. to M. P. Mark Riles of Sixty-nine Storage LLC, the owner of the property at four twenty-five Sandbar Drive, is seeking a rezoning amendment to permit the construction of a self-storage units on the site. A public hearing has been scheduled this evening for that purpose. After a public hearing on July eleventh, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by three to two vote per staff comments and added conditions to improve all keys that face Sandbar Drive to include no overhead doors with services to include all non-metal material and move the keypad and gate further from the road. Voting for the motion, Kathy Barber, Kent Porter, Chasten Parks. Voting against, Chuck Davis and Wyeth Urban. Minutes of that meeting are enclosed in our packet. After the scheduled public hearing this evening, there is a proposed ordinance that has been prepared for us to consider. With that being said, do we have any comments from staff on this?
Sure. I had to double-check to make sure I wasn't muted, and I wasn't muted, but yeah, so self-storage facilities are permitted uses in the industrial zoning district, the property zone industrial. The reason for the rezoning request is for the planned district overlay. Mr. Riles is requesting that a reduction in some of the setbacks for the proposed buildings with the idea that the buildings be around the perimeter of the developed portion of the site rather than having garage doors and drive aisles go around the perimeter of the site. So in the request, they have, they're requesting a reduced setback of twenty feet along the north property line, so instead of a thirty-foot setback, it would be a twenty-foot setback, a ten-foot setback for the east property line, and a ten-foot setback along Sandbar Drive for a fence and parking spaces. The rest of the development would still meet the setbacks along Sandbar Drive, but they have proposed a few parking spaces for employees that would encroach, and then the fence is a decorative wrought iron style fence. Staff thought that was a fairly reasonable request because it's a decorative dark fence, not what you would typically see at a self-storage facility, which would be a tall chain link fence. That's what I thought was a reasonable request. There's also a request that there not be any additional perimeter fence required around the northeast and south sides of buildings in our self-storage requirements. It does talk about the entire perimeter of the project needs to have a perimeter fence, but again, I think that anticipated drive aisles and such might be the outside portion, so those would be, those would need a fence to provide protection. In Mr. Mark Riles' case, we've got buildings on the north, south, and east that provide that barrier for security purposes. At the P. and Z. meeting, there was discussion about those setbacks. There was also discussion about the architectural elements of the buildings that being all metal proposed. As the mayor commented, there was a condition of approval that they improve the facades along the Sandbar Drive facing elevations to be all non-metal and no garage doors facing in those directions. There were updated elevation drawings that were submitted last week in time for this meeting that included a stone veneer on some of the buildings, and then on the northern and southernmost buildings, a brick veneer. And those would be a hard stone type of material. I've lost my place here. Okay, now, the new elevations do show some electrical conduit and electrical boxes may be facing the west along Sandbar Drive, and staff does recommend that those be painted to match the building facade so that they would not stand out for people driving by. Staff also had comments regarding this, your lighting needing to be either full cutoff or shielded to prevent glare from entering Sandbar Drive. That is included as part of the P. and Z. recommendation of approval. Just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that issue as well. The ordinance that's attached does integrate the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. I did also in that ordinance add the recommendation about the painting of the conduit and the electrical boxes to match the buildings.
Do you have anything to add to that, Alderman Barber?
The only thing I would say was that probably the biggest opposition was because of the setbacks. They felt that because of the development that was going to be on the east side of that property, we, as a planning and zoning board, had denied those setbacks. The board members that voted against it felt like those setbacks were not in the best interest of the city.
Okay. This time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you would wish to speak for or against the proposed rezoning, I'll have you move forward, state your name and address for the record. Floor is open. Seeing nobody move, I will close the floor for public comment input. Mr. Riles, would you like to address the board on anything?
Yeah, I don't think there's much. I appreciate you all's time this evening in looking at everything, and I think that when we were talking to Kent last weekend and a couple of other members, we were able to make all the concessions that they were looking for on there, so I appreciate you all looking at this project. We do make our facilities extremely nice and highly secure, so that was the whole reason for the encapsulation of that facility. We kind of wanted to follow the same business model on all of them, but hopefully, I don't think there was any other questions from it. I had Mary Claire zoom in just in case there was, but I think we were able to answer everything, but I didn't know if there was any other concerns from anyone on the setbacks themselves, but I'm sure if there was, they would ask that, so.
Are there any questions from the board, the applicant, or staff?
I'm curious why the facade on some of your buildings will be brick and some stone.
It gave us two different options on there of a veneer. We had some supplier issues being able to get different ones, and we didn't know if we would have to go with the stone or brick veneer. We just have to have some type of facade, so we wanted to make sure we had both options on there, two different colors, so.
But it will all be one when it's.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. It won't be mixed and matched, though. It'll all be one.
My boy.
Yeah, no, we wanted to kind of put them on there to see what it looked like, just in case before we pulled the trigger, but there are some supplier issues. You know, getting a few things in, I want to make sure we can have one or the other, so.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, Mr. Ross.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the board, if we could read the proposed ordinance by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter four hundred of the municipal code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately two point nine five acres in West Ridge Business Center to M. dash P. Industrial Planned District with concept plan as requested by Sixty-nine Storage LLC.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter four hundred of the municipal code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately two point nine five acres in West Ridge Business Center to M. dash P. Industrial Plan District with concept as requested by Sixty-nine Storage LLC.
Make a motion to approve on second read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber? Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
We have no old business on the agenda this evening and no new business. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Holt?
You know, I don't have anything this evening either.
Alderman Lehman?
I'm just glad to be able to soak up air conditioning for a little while, so. But I don't have anything.
Quite the warm week to be at Boy Scout camp.
It's really warm, yes.
Alderman Barber?
Because it's so warm, and I'm sure everybody's going to be looking for things to do, there is a lot going on in Carney this weekend, and so hopefully, everybody will be able to sneak out and see a concert or visit the farmer's market or something, visit the splash pad, have some ice cream, whatever, but there's a lot going on in Carney, so no excuses for staying in all weekend.
Yeah, it's a good concert this weekend. So, and then also, Alderman Lehman, did you have something you wanted to?
I did. I forgot.
Change your mind?
I think it's from being out in the heat so long, but my daughter and grandkids were in from La Mona, California, and my daughter grew up here, and she came into town for my sixtieth birthday. And, uh, she came into town for, for my 60th birthday. And so we, we decided we were gonna take the kids to the splash pad. And, uh, with her growing up in, in Carney, uh, she was absolutely amazed at Lions Park. She just couldn't get over the transformation of, of Lions Park and how, you know, the playground was, was better than some of the playgrounds in, in their neighborhood in Pomona, California. And to have the world-class splash pad like we have, uh, she made the comment, she said, I don't have a splash pad anywhere close to this, anywhere close to my house. And I live in Southern California. And, and so, uh, the kids, the kids had a great time. Grandpa had a great time and got wet. And, and so, uh, kudos to the city of Carney and the Parks Department, uh, for the, the spectacular, uh, area that we have over at Lions Park. So I apologize for not remembering that the first time, so.
Just remind everybody, uh, the city hall is a cooling center. I think we were left off the list, uh, this year in error, but, uh, if you have any, uh, loved ones or family members that, uh, need a cool place to stay during this excessive heat warning all week, uh, city hall is open to, uh, our, our residents during normal business hours. With that, can we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?